So we'll call the meeting for order, I'm gonna ask you to stand and join us in pledge of allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Mr. Owensworth, would you call the role?
Yes, sir. Councilor Bullock?
Yeah.
Councilor Gritsko?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Heinz?
Yeah.
Councilor Munson?
Yeah.
And Councilor Payne?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mayor, you do have a quorum. Matt, could you check the audio input? It sounds like we're maybe picking up off the staff table.
Thank you.
Good, Justin.
Much better. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item two on the agenda tonight is the consent calendar, which includes the approval of the agenda, the financial report for October 2021, and the past meeting minutes for October 11th work session and October 18th regular meeting. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented?
Some movement, sir mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved. Next on our agenda is the public forum, a portion of our meeting, and I see we have a good number of citizens with us this evening. And we'd like to keep it, you know, short, three, four, or five minutes at most, so that everybody has a chance to talk. We're not having any public hearings tonight, but you certainly welcome to talk on any topic you feel like you want to talk on. My plan is on the two zoning items that have created the most interest in town, to have the public hearings for those in January. Get through the holidays, so everybody be available to come in January. If you wish to speak to either of those, Blenheim Road or Bird Street tonight, you certainly have three or four minutes to do that. The three zoning items that are not controversial, we'll go ahead and set those public hearings for next month, so we don't have to have five public hearings in one night. Okay, so we can, we can designate January's meeting as just public hearings for the Blenheim Road question and the Bird Street question. So, as I say, you're certainly welcome to speak to those tonight if you'd like. I would like to start off with someone that I invited to speak during the public session. Uh, one, one day several months ago at the farmer's market, I met some very nice people from the friends of Buckingham. And they were gonna take just a couple of minutes and introduce themselves and speak to the, uh, the issue in Buckingham of gold mining. I know if you watch any of these shows on television about mining gold, they just go in and destroy the whole neighborhood, tear down the trees, and soon have no, no concern for, for nature. So if our friends from Buckingham would pose podium, introduce yourself and spend a couple of minutes, tell us about your project.
Thank you so much for the invitation tonight. Um, my name is Mindy Zabick, and I'm from the Virginia Community Rights Network. We're working with the friends of Buckingham on this project, trying to protect our county from the toxic trespass that we know is going to happen if a gold mine comes in. We know that there's been exploratory mining in the Warmminster area, which is about fifty, near Vingina area. And in early September, they announced that the Canadian company that's been doing exploratory mining announced that there were two additional sites in the county that they were opening up. But because there's no permitting that's necessary for this exploratory mining, we don't know where they are. We do know that they're in Warmminster area because we've seen them in the third. Um, so we're concerned about the impact of the water, the oil, water, oil, soil, our health, our safety, our rural way of life, coal mine, uh, gold mines, metallic mines are open 24/7. Lots of light pollution, lots of noise pollution, and lots of environmental pollution. And it's pretty inevitable from what we've, the research that we've done around the world, that the cyanide and the mercury that they use to extract the gold stays where the gold is extracted. Um, and there's very little money that's put aside to help the community after the gold is found and for mining companies. So I think, um, Mr. Smith was interested because you're downstream from us. And anything that goes into our streams, goes into the James River, and comes right to your doorstep. So what we've done is concern citizens, is gotten together and written an ordinance to, that we're going to propose to our board of supervisors to, um, take back our right to make local decisions and, um, protect ourselves from toxic trespass. What we're looking at is toxic trespass. Companies can tell us, you can't go on this land, you can't trespass on this land, when we're telling them you can't trespass on our property, our water, our oil, our soil, and our air. Um, and we're also including a stipulation called prove it first. This was something that was used in Wisconsin for 20 years, protected them against mining. And it's for mining company to show us, to prove first, before they get any kind of permit, that there's another mine that has not caused harm to humans or to the environment. And basically, they can't do that. So, um, so those are the three problems that this ordinance, it's an 11-page ordinance, it's, and those, that's kind of the summary of it. But I wanted to share it with you in case you are, you might want to participate in, in thinking about an ordinance like this to protect yourselves from what will be coming downstream. No?
Just a question, please. Um, I know Buckingham has other mines and actually has a deep history of gold mines. That's, gold mining is, is, it was one of the most, I guess I would say widely mined areas for gold in the country, early, early in American history, Buckingham County was. So I'm, I'm not familiar with the difference between what they did then versus what they did.
So what they did then was panning for gold and going down, they would make shafts to go down that went as far as the water. When the water came up, they would move and go 20 feet away and start another shaft going down. So the, and that was in the early 1800s. So they didn't have huge excavators, they didn't have, what we're talking about is industrial gold mining, where they go down three or 400 feet, they go below the groundwater. And so they have to deepwater the water that's coming up from the groundwater and bring it up to the top of the mine. I have a picture here that I can show you. This is of the Hale Mine in South Carolina, which has been likened to what we captured in Buckingham County by the exploratory company. So here's the water at the bottom, and they have to bring that up, and then they just let it slide its own path, which in our, with our geography would be all the streets that lead to the territory. So the mining is very, very different. The industrial mining is very different than what they did in the early 1800s.
Sure. The reason I ask is this, I mean, the Buckingham County part of this area has lots of quarries, different types of quarries, different types of mines, different types of mining or something. Forget all of it.
Caiandite and slate are the two big ones in Buckingham. And this ordinance that we wrote is specifically about metallic mining. We didn't want to touch Caiandite and slate, which is instituted in Buckingham County. It employs a lot of people, and it's been around for a long time. So that's not, that, we want to look at new mining that is purely environmentally sustainable. In terms of the town. Thanks for the question. Anything else?
Uh, who has given them permission to mine? Is it independent landowners?
There, what we know, the little that we know is that there are a couple of independent landowners, but mainly it's Wirehouse, the timber company, that's giving them 5,000 acres in Warmminster.
What was that?
Wirehouse, or the timber company that's giving them, that's leased them, I'm sure they haven't given them, they leased them 5,000 acres in the, um, Warmminster area. And then the announcement that was made in September said that they were looking at a brownfield or an abandoned mine. And one of the largest ones is near Strauss's Corner, where 15 and 60 intersect. Um, there's an old Booker mine, which was the first mine that was established in 1832, one of the largest mines. So we're thinking that it might be there, but because the board of supervisors said that permitting wasn't necessary, really, we're kind of going blind with the other two sites until they open them up and we think here is it. But they haven't announced publicly, um, where those other two sites are yet, as far as we know.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming over and letting us know what's going on on the south side of the river. And you aren't very sure.
And I have some flyers if you'd like. There's, um, there's gold in Virginia, but it's not going to make you rich. And then there's, um, some pictures of, of just basic information about that. So I'll leave this here.
Yeah, I need those on the table over there, and then anybody in the audience, we'll stick up one all the way out, and welcome two, and I've got some for the council people here, so.
Okay. And there, just one other thing, there is a state campaign, and, um, because this is going to affect a lot of other people in the state downriver and downstream. So there is a, um, a petition that you can sign if you'd like to protect the state. The petition that we have for Buckingham County is for registered voters in Buckingham County. As soon as we know who you are. And so, um, but there is a state campaign, and I can give you that information.
Send me an email or, okay, send it to me somehow, we'll pick the word up.
Thank you for your time.
Taking all of the public forums, that's a section of our agenda. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to any topic? Come forward, state your name, and...
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Woods, and I live on Blenheim Road. Make sure to write it down again, so I can stay, um, in the time limit. At the last town council work session, um, Mayor, you announced the resignation of a member of the town council and planning commission, as well as a newly appointed member of the architectural review board. We, I, and the small group that I've been working with to present a petition to the town, were shocked inside and to hear their decision was due in part to a longer-term issue starting in December of 2020 of inappropriate community interactions. Scottsville is a small town and close community, has always welcomed public interactions with those serving the town, whether on the council and committees or as a staff. Um, however, it must be noted that those that are serving our community are also private citizens who deserve their space and should feel protected in their space. So such community interactions as stopping someone on the street or in the lawn to share their thoughts, approvals, opinions, concerns, and discontent can quickly become overwhelming and unwanted. We were distressed to learn those serving the community felt harassed and threatened by the community at large. We do not, under any circumstances, condone harassment, threats, intimidation, and as community members, we see the need to make sure it doesn't happen again. With that in mind, the small group of citizens I'm working with, and I discussed some options, we would like to propose to the town council so that no counselor or committee member or commission member will have to go through this sort of issue again. We would like to recommend the town council consider the use of public office hours. Each member could set and publicize their own hours and choose the location that works best for them. Community members could be directed to those public hours. Should those hours not work for the community member or the counselors, the counselors would have the discretion to choose a time and location that would best suit their needs. Office hours could be dropped by or scheduled, Zoom, in person, or by phone. We would also like to recommend public information sessions. Uh, Hardwood, the Hardwood Institute offers some great resources on community discussions. People want to sense that there was an opportunity to contribute to an issue. Public deliberation, not a public hearing or a debate, is an opportunity to hear information from all sides of a discussion. By fostering this idea, people have an opportunity to realize that difference does not mean dissonance. Thank you for considering these two proposals. We as community members feel it is important to keep the community safe. No one should feel that their voices are not heard, or that they should feel unsafe due to intimidation, bullying, or the spread of conjecture.
Could you do me a favor and maybe type that up and send it to us via email, so we can have it as, I mean, it's being recorded for the, the, I'd like to have a black and white copy of it, so I can read over it again.
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good comments. Good comments. Anyone else from the public? Molly, Molly.
Hi, everyone. How are you all doing? My name is Molly Anne DeMarne and I was just recently voted to the planning commission. And proud to be serving this great town of Scottsville. I too was saddened by the resignation of Sherry Lambert from her spot on your ranks as well as the chair of our committee, our commission. What I want to maybe point out is that this is definitely a safety issue and I'm so glad that there is dialogue in place to talk about these things and, and have some backup as far as when things get a little tight, when things are very emotional, it can, it can really get out of hand. So I'm grateful for that. What I wanted to point out also is that as volunteers to this town, we are very committed to helping this town succeed and prosper. But we also need to feel as if we're being supported as well. I think it's important when we voice our concerns that they're being taken seriously. I think it's important, I would like to suggest that maybe that council consider maybe putting some things in place, some expectations as far as response and call to action. I think that this incidence could have been avoided with a little more communication and a little more understanding. I think that we failed in that area and I want to make sure that this is talked about and maybe considered for the future. It's really important that when we put ourselves out there that we're being heard. It can't, you know, a community should, should come around the people that's, that represent them and support them. And with a little support in return. So I'd like for us to keep this dialogue open and keep working towards a better solution for this kind of thing. I think it could have been avoided. We really missed out on a really great and shining star in this town. She was someone who, you know, really nurtured the people around her. And I'm sorry that I won't be working with her, but thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Stocner. I'm also on the planning commission and a resident of Scottsville. I'll just read the email that I'll be submitting for, for the public record. Town Council and Mr. Mayor, as planning commission members, we are volunteers filling an unglamorous public service role. We are asked to make hard decisions that will affect our town and citizens for years to come. Some of the decisions we make as a body are not popular and are in direct contrast to what the public is telling us they want. We make these decisions after much research, discussion and input from the public because we think it will benefit our town in the long run. We put ourselves out on a limb for the town of Scottsville and we deserve the support of town officials. When one of us comes to you with regards to and concerns about bullying, intimidation and threats. Regarding this recent incident, we were not supported in a timely manner after reaching out to you for advice and counsel and our chair resigned and is moving out of town as a result. Even her resignation letter was ignored and not addressed until we emailed you three days later to find out why no one was addressing the issue. Former Commissioner Lambert addressed in her letter. It is not good enough to just ignore us. We deserve more support from town council and the mayor. And not just in the form of police intervention. It, it's gotten way too far out of hand if it's gotten to that stage. With your lead.
Anyone else?
I just, I just want to say, you know, I, I know this has been a very controversial issue and very divisive in our community and I would like, I, I like the idea that you are going to have a special meeting for the special use permit and the public hearing on, on that alone. But before that, I would like to see if either that meeting or a separate meeting to have a, a really information session about the the developments, because I think there's a lot of confusion and I can't answer. And there's a lot of conditions that I'm not sure what, what they are to, to really present that before it goes to vote. For one thing is, you know, the planning commission denied the whole idea of a special or a village residential. And the developer came in and proposed this and that. Now the planning commission is saying, let's go with it. So I would like to see their thinking and how it got to thirty-six. And also any information from the landlord, any communication with the town about his vision of it. But just some clarification on HOAs, roads, density, environment design, what needs to happen and what's planning to happen and what are the, what has to happen for him to develop. Before, to even comment on these things, I think it would be good for a presentation of what this means to to the town and the issues and because I think it's just been so confusing and, and back and forth and, and it's happened very quickly too. So, you know, I'd like, like to see if that could happen before the public hearing somehow.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Matt and Lisa, let's see if we can have some kind of public gathering the week before the council meeting. One night, you know, Thursday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night up here and have the developer here and he can personally answer the questions that you may have. And let him bring all the slides and maps and, and drawings that he wishes to bring and then put him on the hot seat. Okay? Let's, let's plan on that for the week before the public hearing. I don't have about twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever it is, calendar before me, so. The week before the third Monday will be a public information open house. Okay? Does that work? All right. Thank you so much. Any other public comments? Lisa?
Hello, I am Lisa Calpiano. I am the vice chair and perhaps acting chair of the planning commission. And I want to thank everyone that's here. This is my first town council meeting in a very long time, so it's nice to see that others are ahead of me and coming more frequently. I guess what I'd like to say, a couple of things. A few important points were touched on. The public engagement is so important. We have so many conversations. And sometimes repeat conversations, we've discussed things like traffic and density. Environmental issues. We've addressed those things multiple times in the planning commission meetings. But I think that sometimes things get lost in translation, so it is helpful to have some sort of forum where everyone can come together and ask the questions and get the answers. One point that I was discussing with Ms. Cable and Ms. Root at the end of last meeting was about a public engagement opportunity called a charade. Charade, charade, thank you. And that's, that's an opportunity for community partnership to get together, maybe everyone knows this already. And, and discuss the details of the development. So I think if, if the community knows that there will be continued opportunities for engagements, it's more palatable and there'll be more bonding and makes more sense for people. In, in regards to the resigning of Ms. Lambert. Personally, I could say that I've never felt singled out or put upon or unsupported. But that's just my personal. And, and I would be curious to see what others have to say about that. But I recognize that we're, we're sometimes in the hot seat and people are very passionate. So it is nice when we have an opportunity to discuss in civilized format. And that being said, I think the civilized discussion goes both ways. So I think it's important that we all take a deep breath, give each other the benefit of the doubt, we're all on the same team. No, not everyone's going to be happy with the process. Unfortunately, we have to make decisions that, that are complicated and stressful, you know, stressful for people. So we're all trying our best and let's just all remember that we're on the same team for our community, every single one of us in this room. But I think we'll get there with open dialogue and civilized discussion. Thank you.
Anyone else? You want all the long zoom wish to make comment?
I don't see anybody.
So that closes the second floor session. Mayor's report is going to be this. I have a, I have a statement. And it's going to be, I'll use my three minutes to read my statement a few. And I'm going to wait for the call here because I don't have the strongest voice right now. I want to make sure this gets heard. So bear with me for about three minutes. Here is a definition for you. Civil discourse is a conversation where there is mutual area of views. It's not a contest whether it is intended to promote mutual understanding. Civil discourse follows the general rules of polite behavior. This does not mean you have to behave like this manners, but it does mean there are certain behaviors that make everyone uncomfortable and that indicate that the discussion is turned hostile and unproductive. There's really only just one rule to civil discourse. Don't make it personal. Civil discourse means being respectful to the other person and his or her views. Being disrespectful is not engaging in civil discourse. Thomas Jefferson said, I have never considered a difference of opinion in politics and religion and philosophy as cause for withdrawing from a friend. Watching the nightly news hardly needing those files, but there's not a report of people being threatened, intimidated or attacked for no reason other than they were just doing their job or peacefully expressing their views. I thought how lucky we are here in Scottsville that we don't have to deal with that sort of behavior, but I was wrong. When I moved here in two thousand and seven to purchase a business, I became involved in the community. It didn't take long for your lives at Scottsville was a caring community where people worked out for one another, had a general respect for one another and did not hesitate to address the needs of a fellow resident, even if he or she had moved here from somewhere else. When my plans for purchasing the business fell apart in two thousand and eight, I could have put my home up for sale or not. But by that time, I made a number of friends here and I wanted to stay, so I started a small business in state. The unique thing about our town is that we were run on volunteerism. If we're not for dedicated citizens who love the town and give up their time and talents as volunteers, the town will be hard pressed to get anything done. Certainly, everyone has a right to question a decision and express their views on a subject, but they do not have a right to be threatening and intimidating in doing so. Having just observed Metro Tuesday, it reminded me, and I, I served during the Vietnam period. It reminded me that when our servicemen returned from Vietnam and they were subjected to taunts, jeers and rude comments when all they had done was their duty to their country by serving. Our council members, committee chairman and those who volunteered to serve the town in any way did not deserve to be accosted on the street or in their halls, at their halls, and be treated brutally and disrespectful. I have discussed security with our chief of police. In the future, if you're having a committee meeting or a public hearing and feel security might be an issue, contact me or the town administrator and we will coordinate security for your meeting. If I or any council member up here has a similar concern about an upcoming meeting, you'll coordinate with the chief. When any elected or appointed official is confronted on the street and feels threatened or intimidated, walk away and call nine one one. The responding officer can take a report and give information on how to obtain a warrant. Don't say or do anything like what you're doing. As I said last week, ninety-nine plus percent of our residents are decent, law-abiding, friendly citizens. However, there's always a few who sometimes create problems. We need to be civil with one another. This, that has been the history of this town. That's why people want to move here and everyone needs to work to keep it that way. My thanks to Thomas and Matt. We have before us a resolution of the town council of the town of Scottsville admonishing civil interference and supporting democratic dialogue. And we will get to that later on on the agenda. So that's my three minutes worth and something new on our agenda now is a report from the vice mayor. Mr. Bristow is our vice mayor these days. And so, Mr. Vice Mayor Bristow, it's your call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, planning commissioners and citizens who spoke. I, I would like to follow up on what you said, Mr. Mayor. First of all, having served on the council for eleven years, Mr. Mayor, we've overlapped each other in different capacities. Now are in the lead role of our town. Thankfully, most of the time when we dialogue with each other, we deal off, we dialogue most with one day. So that tends to be our dialogue and as we do so, we also chat about things that are important, but they tend to be, most people aren't aware and we work things out. I, I first of all, want to say, I'm going to say three things. First of all, I really regret on a personal level that I did not identify something that happened in this chamber, because I would respond differently had I done so. And I want to say to the planning commissioners here. Please know that we have your back and we will, and I will not tolerate this kind of garbage that has taken place. And if it happens in the future on a personal level, please know that we will support you. The mayor has already laid out his thoughts and I think it's wise. And serving on the council for eleven years, I've been though, I've had many occasions where I've been around some heated conversations and unfortunately they do happen. But I think it's wise as we do forward that we are careful about. So first of all, I regret on a personal level not being much more active in our response. Just so you planning commissioners know, we responded fairly quickly between the house, but it should have been quicker to you. So there were things that we addressed. Secondarily, I think one of the things I want to say is, is just that we are supportive and, and we listen. And that process of listening, I think that was a great idea that you had. Whether it's office hours or whatever, we have open ears to what you have to say. We may disagree, but I'm sure on some of this we do. But having open ears to listen to what is being said is, is important and, and to be able to dialogue on that. I was talking to somebody who was very involved with the town in the past, getting some of my own advice over the last weekend. One of the things this person had to say is it's very common that there's a wide swath of support that often is silent for what we do and it's the people who are the most vocal often aren't the most numerous, so to speak, in terms of what we do. And I think that comes back to the one, the one commissioners had to say. It would be good to know there's a lot of quiet support out there, whatever the issue is. And the last point I would like to say is, I mentioned this last week and I'm going to pull this little teddy bear here for a moment and just to say, I think it's wise that we as a town think about the future. So often we get caught up in the past, we get caught up in the now. We worry about parking places, we worry about people coming and going. One of the things I did the last couple of days is I talked to some young families, talked to some people who are the future, both in this town and other places. And I asked them, what would they want in the community like this? What are they looking for? And thankfully, Scottsville has some of those things. But one of the things it doesn't have is a neighborhood or an area that is designated for young families to live in. And I'm hopeful that we will for the past, whether it's downtown or upstate. I'm not wedded to certain numbers of houses, but I am simply saying that I think we would make a mistake not realizing that these young families, these younger people, singles, whatever, these families, but these kids, these young kids. There's a future in Scottsville. And so when we make decisions, when we go forward, my hope isn't just about us or those represented in this room or the people that live in Scottsville now. I'm mostly worried about who's going to live here tangentially from now. Having had six kids grow up in this town, seeing them get their first jobs here, seeing the opportunity that they have and also seeing now that we have a number of young families around through. seeing them get their first jobs here, seeing the opportunity that they have, and also seeing now that we have a number of young families around here living nearby. I just want to remind all of us that those young families, I think are our future. And for my part, I really want to make sure those young families who are out there and hear us talk, know that we really want to give you opportunities and are and are listening to you. Not that we're not listening to other people, but recognizing they're the future. And so I think it's wise, Mr. Mayor, that as we dialogue on all these different issues, we keep the five, ten, twenty, thirty years in view. And those ones who are playing with something like this would be like a Josh Peck in the future for our town later served with us on time council. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Since we're still on this topic, any other council members wish to say anything?
I'm just thinking.
I'd like to think if planning commission caller were on these topics, I think they've shown a lot of confidence. I think they've done a lot of work in alignment with what this town has already done, from our comprehensive plans, the West area plans, the design. And I think taking their time and doing some good fact gatherings come to a conclusion about what would make sense for these two sites. So I want to thank the planning commission for their consideration and getting expert opinion before making the recommendations which are now before us.
Any other council members, Mr. Steve, anything?
I've never thanked town council for their participation as volunteers for the community. It's a lot of time that goes into any project and not specifically to state the diversity and rhythm that we are dealing with right now. A lot of people see it, a lot of people don't. All the work and the phone calls and the planning and the research and the departments that go into any type of project of this magnitude. And I feel like sometimes the public just comes down to you and has that three minutes. That three minutes doesn't compare to the hours and hours and hours that a lot of people have put into now specifically to save these projects. So I like to thank everybody that's been involved in the past, now, and as we go on, we're all volunteers here. Since I've been on council about four years now, it's been a common thread with us and the ones that are coming and going, that we want to keep a small town feeling. They don't make towns like this anymore. I, I lived in Atlanta for fifteen years and the North Prophets and the, the Fortunes and the Loos and the Mayor Adams, where, where I used to drive around, used to be distinct looking communities. Now, when you get off of an exit in four hundred, they all look the same. First thing you pass, you know, is, is, you know, is your pass food chains and then you get deep into the communities. And finally, you find the old town embedded within. I don't think any of us want that. But on the other hand, Scottsville is going to have to grow because Scottsville needs money. Every, our tax base, it is what it is. And nobody wants more taxes. So we've got to find sources of revenue. And we've got to, to grow and keep what we have and build upon those strengths. And we're not going to make friends. I'm sorry. And I hope we don't make enemies. But I think for all of us working together as a community, council, planning commission, all involved, that we can come to a, you know, a conclusion that compromise that will benefit this town for years to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to thank that planning commission, excuse me, my voice is a little shot today, for all the work they put in. I've, I've been on the planning commission in the past and know that we do spend an awful lot of time on a lot of small things that are really important that a lot of people don't see. And every once in a while, energy comes up that, that becomes I guess more in the public eye and there's a lot of connection about it and, and, and you're, you're the face of that and you're the first first folks that people talk to and, and you know, sometimes that can be heated. And very few people I think appreciate all the time that you put into it and, and everything that you do for the town. So like to first say thank you for that. I would also like to echo Mayor Smith's comments that, you know, this town is a democracy. Democracy must have civil discourse in order to survive. And everyone, no one is going to get everything that they want. In a democracy, you all need to compromise. If you want to have absolute say over what is on in this town, buy it and do what you want with it. If not, you're going to cancel it, do what everyone else wants to do. And I, so far in this town have been very impressed with the acceptance that I have seen. It's no secret that I have a big Black Lives Matter banner up in my town and to be honest, or up in my porch. And to be honest, the first couple of nights I was a little concerned about what I'd also show up there and spray paint, but nothing did. And I have never had, I've had some good conversations with people in, in town about that and they have all been civil. And so I would think that I would agree that most of the people here are, are very accepting of other people's opinions and that there are, you know, just a few folks that are, that are, are not. So would like to let the planning commission know that, you know, I've been there and, 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 you know, it's, I think what you've seen is, is the exception and not the rule around here. And if there's anything I can do to support you, I will certainly do that when you know, I'll be happy to help out.
As the newest council member, I feel like I came on at a very heated, I have been involved in Scottsville in the past on various committees and volunteer aspects. I feel like I came into council as kind of a heated, heated time. And it's really given me a new appreciation for, in particular, the, the mission members, but, you know, volunteers in general. So I just want to reiterate what everybody else has been saying and basically thank you and that you have our support and appreciation. Feel free to be in touch if you need any help with anything.
Thank you. Let's move on now to the reports of our committees. I'll start on the end there. If there's anything exciting with ARD right there.
I guess the first thing is we now have a vacancy on board we just built. And as a result, we also need to move our meeting to the second Thursday of December so that we do have a forum. But we're now seeking a town resident to serve on the architectural review board. Ideally, if we especially like people to live in town, we also live in historic overlay district. So living in a historic home is a big help because you understand the process, you understand what it's like living in a historic home. And I think that helps put some good eyes on the COAs to get appropriate process. So we need someone to, to come forward somewhat to come forward and apply. We also have interest from an architect that we're looking forward to interviewing to building other vacancy that we left open so that we could do our due diligence to recruit an architect to be in alignment with our application to become a certified government, which can open up funding and training for this town in our architectural preservation work. Additionally, we're about to do our annual inventory, which is when we walk around town and take a look at homes in the historic overlay district on the street to assess their condition. It's an important part of what we do to evaluate communicating property owners about the condition of homes. We'll be doing that hopefully with a little more efficiency this year now that we have Office 360, which will hopefully allow us on the ARB to do a little work that Thomas no longer has to. Thanks for smiling, Thomas. So that's a big piece coming forward now. I'm trying to, anything else? We did sort of get a COA approved for an Airbnb on 350 Dallas Street. Did some work building a parking lot. Get some landscaping in place to create a buffer between the lot and the sidewalk as well as a COA for a painted door which is going in at the Riverbend Boutique. I think a really pop.
Any questions for Mr. Bullock? My vice mayor, Bristow, is going to be our council representative on planning commission for a while. I don't know that you've been to one of their meetings yet, but is there anything on parks, recreation or tourism travel that you want to tell us about?
One thing that I would say would be, Mr. Mayor, that the nature area Scottsville Lake does get stocked this time of the year and it's typically fishable until it freezes over. Usually there's two stockings that take place in trout in the fall. And then there's usually six that take place in the spring. I mentioned that it's a great place to fish. If you're under sixteen, you don't need a license, but keep that in mind. There's been also a couple of service projects done there recently for more in the future, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not on short form, but I do not have my meetings together yet. I am meeting with Nora on Sunday and we are going to give you a little guidance. Like we have a number of interesting committee members and want to make a call for a seat last night.
Yeah, a couple of things. We had a great Halloween weekend here recently. Started with a, with a dog costume walk on Friday, which was the brainchild of one of our local businesses here. And we had folks from Charlottesville come down as well as some other surrounding areas and that I think is attracting dog walkers, I think is a, is a, another small part of what we can do to encourage traffic in, in town. We have the levee, we've got Van Cleef, we've got a head store of the walking tour. All of those things are things that, that can be enjoyable for both man and animal, personally. So that, that turned out very well. We drove, gave away prizes for costumes for dogs and kids, it turned out. We had a farmer's market, the last one on Saturday, and then the Edgar Allan Poe play and trick or treat on Sunday. There were a lot of people here on, on that Sunday. All of the businesses came out, gave away candy. We had a lot of folks come down and to, so many so that we had to have the police come down and direct traffic and make sure that the street was safe for, for books and kids to run across back and forth. So very safe environment. Everybody's enjoying a really great time. A lot of participation from businesses and I think some of them are open as well too. So, so we hope to be able to do some more things like that in, in the future and really encourage any of the businesses in town that have ideas like that to let us know. We were able to, to extend the open alcohol permit on that Friday as well too. So that encouraged books to come down and stroll and, and look at the windows and that shop windows, scan things for us as well. So seems like a good time to say by all, a lot of folks came down and, and I think it was, hopefully was, was good for the businesses as well. Second thing is we have received a grant from the state of Virginia for small business development. The way that that works is that we have several open storefronts here in Scottsville and we will be running a sort of business development contest here starting at the beginning of the year. And Mr. Wallace has, has assured me that we'll have a flyer out about this if there's some more information and get some information up on the website as well. But the way that it works is we will encourage people with ideas for small businesses for one of those storefronts to come and take a class or course, multi-week course on small business, how to start a small business. So we'll basically teach them the essentials of finance and accounting and marketing and operations, those sorts of things over the course of a couple of weeks. And then that course will culminate in writing a business plan for one of those open storefronts. And then we have a panel of successful Scottsville entrepreneurs here who will be reviewing those, those plans. And the two, one or two, depending on how we set it up, will receive a grant, which means it's free money ten to fifteen thousand dollars to start their business in that storefront. So that's going to be happening starting in January. Existing businesses in Scottsville, if you would like to expand or start a different business in one of the storefronts, you're welcome to apply and participate in that as well too. So if you do have a business in Scottsville and you've got some, some other additional ideas, you know, this is a great way to get a, a start on it. So I encourage you to keep open your eyes open for that, let people know about it. In the short term, you, and if you'd like information, you can reach out to either me or Mr. Wallace. Longer term, be more than a couple of weeks, we'll have information up on the, on the website and, and also some more specific information about the dates for the class that the course will start. So yeah, hopefully we'll have a couple of new businesses in the springtime in the storefronts.
Thank you. Payne was trying to take over local services and he also handles public safety as a subcommittee of public, of local services.
No. I don't know. I was on the public service committee for four years of, of been on council and we didn't have that much fervor to us, so there was an overlap. I, I think and council seemed to agree between the duties of the public service and the governmental services. So I haven't met with anyone yet and haven't really fully committed. That's Thomas's assistance to give me the right road. If the council has anything they want to refer, I'd be glad to take on the consideration and move on and see what these folks saw and where we need to get to go.
As I said earlier, I've met with Chief Gary a couple of times and see him on the phone talking about the security and so you heard what I just said about that. So they're aware of it. They're aware of what they need to. Is there anything further from the planning commission that's way of a report to either Matt or Lisa or any of the planning commissioners? Anything else to add to what the planning commission has done these past few weeks since your last meeting?
The report acts are on agenda as action items. So I can, I can drill over those a little bit when they come up on agenda if that's sufficient.
Yeah, I would also comment that we're taking December off and assuming in twenty twenty-two it will be focusing on the comprehensive plan. So we'll be breaking out in groups and figuring out what our production will be on that.
So let's move on then. Are there any questions starting with the cabinet, the committee chairman, commissioner chairman? This resolution that I mentioned earlier, Matt and Thomas actually put their heads together and came up with this. And I was wondering, Matt, if you would like And I was wondering, Matt, if you would like to just read it for the benefit of all involved.
I'm glad you said. It's less than a page, we tried to keep it simple. As you said, so the title is a resolution of the town council of the town of Scottsville, admonishing civil interference and supporting democratic dialogue. And from a staff perspective, we really appreciate y'all taking this on. It's certainly news that we, the staff, all share. We want to do our best work to support our volunteers in public service on all of our committees and councils. So if this is your guidance, it's certainly something we can work with. I'll start by quoting the Constitution of Virginia, which has its own Bill of Rights, distinct and in some ways more specific than the United States Constitution. Section 15 of the Constitution of Virginia reads, "That no free government nor the blessings of liberty can be preserved by any people but by a firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, and virtue; by frequent recurrence to fundamental principles; and by the recognition by all citizens that they have duties as well as rights; and that such rights cannot be enjoyed, say, in a society where law is respected and due process observed." So whereas the town of Scottsville chartered since 1818, provides local democracy and government in service to the health, safety, and welfare of all the people of the town, with elected and appointed officials volunteering their service to the community, while all residents can freely share their views. And whereas the town council of the town of Scottsville requires the advisory capacity of numerous volunteer boards to inform the legally binding decisions that ultimately rest with the town council. And whereas the town council of the town of Scottsville makes available monthly opportunity for public comment at their own public meetings, as well as those of the charter committees, and provides publicly available contact information for all town council members and charter committee volunteers. Now therefore, it is all that the town council of the town of Scottsville will dutifully defend the environment abroad civic and data. Any attempts to intimidate or interfere with the conduct of volunteer members of the chanted charter committees will not be tolerated. Where applicable, they will be referred to the Scottsville Police Department for criminal investigation, with the full support of the Scottsville Town Council. It is all the town council commends and appreciates the service of all the volunteer members of the planning commission and the architectural review board, and pledges to fully support their work for the benefit of the Scottsville community.
That sounds like it covers it. Does anybody have any questions on this, Bullock?
One, thank you first of all for grabbing this for us. The only edit I would suggest in the closing paragraph, where it appreciates the service of all the volunteer members, I would then just include the commissions and committees, because I do feel that this should cover some of the other ones. And not just those listed here.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say this is that the town remains welcome to people of differing views. This is not at all an attempt to say you can't differ on any issue, on any subject, and can't express it multiple times in multiple ways. What this is trying to do is to protect those who serve the town and the town from undue harassment. And perhaps there's a fine line between that. But that being said, I think it is wise for us to affirm our concern over what happened and at the same time, express our ongoing support for dialogue. And that dialogue is open. And I hope we learn the lesson, so to speak, from this experience. And sadly, it has cost us. And it's not been a welcome experience, but it's been one that hopefully this will help us as we go forward.
Any other comments?
Do I hear a motion that we accept this resolution with the change offered by Mr. Bullock? I moved if we accept this resolution with the change that includes all volunteer organizations or all volunteer committees and organizations that support the council.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And is there any further discussion? Mr. Onsworth, would you call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Bullock? Counselor Grisco?
Yes.
Counselor Hines? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
And Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion will carry five to none.
And thank you and Matt for your hard work on that. Thank you. Public hearings, all the public hearings on the five items that the planning commission forwarded to the council. And as I said earlier, I think it would be wise for our December meeting to do the three matters of items, the zoning text amendment for the state model plug playing ordinance, the parking on Main Street, and the map amendment for the Jamesville Road property where Tiger Fuel is going in. We need to vote on that or just?
Just voice votes on these are fine.
Okay.
I have a question before we move on. Sure. As far as the zoning map amendment, so 153 days of a row, did we ever post a sign on site for that one? Isn't there a prime of friends who have changed our newspaper on here under sign on site?
The text amendment has a little bit different set of rules on it and requires mail to the neighboring property owners. So we did that.
Okay.
Let me check whether it also needs signs. I know that the special use permits get signs.
I know, because last, I just had some notes about that we didn't have the signature special use permit, so I wasn't sure if we needed it or. I guess a lot of stuff.
I can check my, I can check my wall book here real quick. But if Mitch Line knows that offhand, she does this work more quickly than I do.
Hey, everyone, could you, I'm sorry, Matt, could you repeat the question? I have trouble hearing it.
Do you know offhand, is it in 2204 that map amendments always need a sign on the subject property? I know they need mail to the neighbors.
I don't know offhand if that is in the state code. I can, I know that you're looking it up right now. I can look it up myself. Other localities require signs. I'm unsure whether or not that's a state or local requirement.
This is my Bible. No, it's written, it's written notice to the neighbors is the most important thing. That when we do, when we do the special use permit, that's got in our code, the signs up. For the map amendment, the mail notice to the neighbors is important. And the newspaper ad is required, which we did. And notice online discussion, that's okay. Thank you for asking.
Yes, good question. So any other questions? So I guess I should review two motions or just one motion to split up the public hearings. So do some more again.
One up two times.
Makes no difference. You could do them all as one or two motions for the two different meetings, if you prefer.
So I need a motion to have the, on your list there, the first three, public hearings on December 20th and the two, this is the Goja Presidential Special Use Amendment on January 17th, where we can have two separate motions. Just need some kind of motion.
Do I ask another question before the main motion? Sorry. Priorities remain for the public hearings. And then our time frame come back.
Do we have a public hearing and then it's time to vote? So we can vote the same night as a public hearing or we could put it off to each other?
You could, but you don't have to. After that public hearing, motions are in order. But if there are questions that are maybe unanswered, things that you still need to work on with it, you've got time afterwards.
We have 90 days afterwards, is that correct?
I've seen these go longer than that. I don't, I don't know offhand when it's required to be done. The planning commission is required to report out. But once it sits with y'all, I've seen these be negotiated at some length in the past. So I'm not certain what you're, what you're definitely, but you do have time. So don't feel like if your, if your meeting is on the 20th to the 17th, that you have to go by the way. If, you could make a motion to call a question right after that public hearing. But if there's things you need to work on, you certainly have time to do that.
And one thing to say, too, is it's not uncommon to be set to say it. When it's not complicated, that we do it that night also. So I would say, wouldn't you say, Matt, that's more common, that we tend to do it that night also, other than lots of complicated?
If your, if your questions are all answered and you're ready to vote, that is often how it happens. If you're not ready, you don't have to.
I'd say that's more common, but it just depends on the situation.
Well, let's do it two separate. Do I hear a motion that we take the floodplain, Main Street, Jamesville Road, public hearings for December 20th?
I assume.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I am opposed.
Now, we hear a motion that special use permit for Bloom Road and special use permit for Bird Street, we heard, were set for January 17th.
I assume.
Second?
Seven.
And we need some discussion on that. All in favor?
I'm. One hundred percent.
Well, I think, well, I could possibly be saying that. I think I know the company.
Well, like you said, we don't have to vote that night. We just have a public hearing that day and if we. If the public were to sway us to vote, then we vote. If the public were to sway us to, let's think about it for another month or so, then we go that direction. So the motion as we move the segment that we have the public hearing for Bloom Road and Bird Street projects on January 17th. Is all in favor?
I am opposed.
No. I'm sorry. I don't feel like it needs to be pushed down a little bit further and even possibly sway to vote that night. Don't know that I'm ready for that.
The dirty rule, so we have it on that night. So that, what that means, according to my calendar, is the week before, maybe we could have that community involvement session, January 12th or 13th. That's Wednesday or Thursday evening. So we'll kind of let shoot through that, see if we can get that on the calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
Could, um. So I'll, we'll, staff will work on outlining that.
Yeah.
And on, at the December work session, I'll bring a plan for that event and check in. And over the holidays is a good time for staff, when things are quiet here, to put together some of that material. Make sure that we're prepping the right thing. But we'll have the December work session to kind of get ready for it. To make sure that we've got things ready and answer the expected questions. Make sure we have plenty of time available on there for back and forth. Okay.
Yeah, I'd also just reiterate, you have two work sessions on the bottom here before that, which are also open to the public, so I refer you to attend. Because a lot of the questions that you may have, we will likely be discussing in work session. To your point, too, Mayor, you know, we've got two work sessions worth, too, to make sure that you put questions out to us or to town staff, get them answered. So that we can talk, because I want to make sure we talk through these things as well, that we use our work session as deliberate manner to do so. I know I've done some thinking in our previous session, some thoughts that I asked, I need about.
So the record of the planning commission meetings is also very helpful, audience, that especially on the two special use permits, planning commission reported out recommendations on a two to one vote. So there, the reporting to their meetings and the minutes of their meetings will show a difference of opinion and different views that could be helpful for council and the public as well.
Also, you know, public needs to remember, any time they have a question or want a person to answer, or want to present a question, don't hesitate to call or send an email and ask them to be included in the work session. That's fine, you know. It can be here, sit in the work session, and it's not a, work sessions are not really a place where the public has speaking time allotted to them. But if you have a question and make it sure they're before the work session, send it to us so we can have it worked for us and addressed. All right, now, Matt, it's one of the vehicle licenses fees.
Okay. Thanks, sir. And with, with respect to our colleagues in Admiral County, they helped us, they helped us real well with the labor on this. And this project comes up from Admiral County's finance office. Longtime residents in town will remember that the town used to, used to require vehicle decals displayed on the vehicles that garage in town as a vehicle license fee. And we had mixed results collecting that. And Admiral County, seven years ago, began to help us with the administration vote by connecting that decal fee to the car tax. So when you get your tax bill, it's got the value added tax from the car and also a flat fee for the decal. That really, that looks much better in terms of uniform collection and running that fairly. We never, that was done on a handshake. There was never a contract framework that required that. And with, with turnover, both in town staff and county staff, the timing of those collections definitely shifted. And it was inconsistent, we weren't sure what we were giving. So state law allows us to contract on this in a memo of understanding framework, that the county will collect this for the town, use the tax rates the town council sets, and then send that money back to us on a handling fee that we agree on. The county board thought that was a good idea to make a routine out of something that we had been doing on a friendly basis. They put in a 2% handling fee, which I think is very fair and less than, we'd be spending on running a decal program if we tried to make it back. The board supervisors passed this memo ratified on their side last week, and they're ready to proceed with it. I think it would help make a firm routine out of a good arrangement that we've got here and protect us in the face of any turnover in the town staff or county staff in the future. Questions for Matt?
Oh, yeah, what's the, you're planning to do this with Fluvana as well, right?
Absolutely. The town tax rate is the same across both counties. And we need to have this in place with both counties to make sure that it runs consistently for the Admiral and Fluvana side. So if this, if this is, meets council's pleasure, is approved, we'll carry it over to Fluvana County next, in the same time.
And so if you are a vehicle owner, whatever, in town, you don't have to do anything different. I'll have to pull it back in.
You are already getting that bill from your respective county and your payment will not change.
Any other questions? I hear a motion that we enter into this agreement, that more county, the vehicle license fees.
I move that we enter into it, MOU, not one of county, the vehicle license fees.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Mr. Onsworth?
Thank you, sir. Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Grisco?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion will carry five to none.
Staff reports, if you have anything else to add. I know you heard the change of the day. You went to a conference in Norfolk last week, so like before, I know, you certainly have it for.
It's been a couple of good events, three, yes, thank you. The Greater Charlottesville Chamber of Commerce hosted a young professionals group that I'm a member of today. And I had the opportunity to speak about the towns' projects using American Rescue Plan funds. I was at the table with the county finance director and one of our community partners, the Community Investment Club, which is running for us the business training workshop and pitch contest that Mr. Munson mentioned. So it was a good opportunity to highlight the town's. Uh, so it was a good opportunity to highlight the town's project work with, um, young entrepreneurs and staff from the Charlottesville area and encourage them to consider Scottsville as a place to grow, to grow and start their businesses. Um, as you said, sir, um, I spent a couple of days last week in Norfolk at the Governor's Housing Conference, um, which is the, um, kind of signature event for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, that's a prime way to learn about grant funding opportunities and training, as well as to, um, learn from, uh, peers in the industry about some of the very land use and planning matters out of the forest map. So it was a good place to get some advice for the projects that we're working on now and, uh, compare across the state. And, uh, as you heard, uh, not, not least because, uh, the questions that they're struggling with in Scottsville, are not uncommon. Many, many bodies find themselves in a similar kind of situations and, uh, there's advice we have. So, uh, I, I look for that advice from my colleagues and, uh, would encourage commissioners and counselors to do the same. But, uh, if you look around the map at similar communities, um, it's okay to call for advice from your peers in those chairs in the other places and they're happy to share. And I, I take a lot of comfort in that myself and feel, um, refreshed coming back into that work, to doing that. The, uh, it was a fun weekend here in town. Uh, the Scottsville Center for the Arts of Nature had, uh, a good, a good get on Saturday. Uh, and I was, I was part of a great volunteer team moving a donation of sculpture from the Pugi Rua Aboriginal Museum in Charlottesville to a permanent home on the scan land on Hardware Street. I don't know what that sculpture would have appraised at, but it's beautiful and impressive in the last throw on the last.
I saw it today and, uh, you might be, you might be going to mention this, but, uh, Scan received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant last week from Mount Lewis Foundation.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, so, uh, we haven't seen this piece of sculpture, it was a cultural cemetery, that's where Scan land is. Bobby Spencer donated thirteen acres to, uh, Scan a number of years ago. And it's just been sitting there and now we're there in charge of Stan. She lives, uh, there are welcome trails or places to, uh, just enjoy nature and now we're doing art work there too.
Yep. This will also be our, um, our last public meeting before Santa comes to town. Um, Scottsville's holiday happening. It's on Saturday, December fourth. That's our, um, our Christmas tree lighting. Um, we've got a great volunteer group, uh, within the, um, the arts center, our Chamber of Commerce and, uh, active neighbors. So look for, um, singers on the street. We've got a couple of church flyers coming, um, and the Oratorio Society members singing. Local businesses will be open for some holiday shopping. Uh, it's the third use of the town's outdoor refreshing, um, A D C places. So, um, mold wine and hot cider available, strong and, uh, and Santa comes to town. So fun for, uh, for all ages, for people to do it. Excited to get there.
So, and, uh, there's my group, the, the Wimby Festival, White's Christian Street is played, but it won't be in one location like that as we have in the past. It's, it's businesses are being encouraged to display a tree in your school park. Uh, those businesses that don't have their school park, uh, probably if you have their trees downstairs in Victory Hall. So, uh, that is good. I had, uh, it didn't mention earlier, but I did make, uh, chamber, chamber commerce meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago and Dan Currie, who puts out, has put out in the past, the Scottsville Directory, who is a small number, only good information there, plans to have one in January, the twenty-twenty-two version of the Scottsville Directory, which we have been listening for the last couple of years. Um, Thomas, do you have anything you need to say?
No, sir. Nothing to add.
Is anybody else, anything?
No, I'm pleased with our, um, joint meetings with the Admiral Supervisors. And I was, I know, so all of them share our existing comprehensive plan. Um, I also shared, I took, I took a status file sharing. I love this Office three sixty thing. Um, when I shared a document with Matt and Thomas, it just had some of our action items on it. And so I'm wondering if that would be helpful as a start to just have a standing document that we can all see as a reference point, you know, use a nicer font or something like that, say the X thing.
Give that a try. The, um, reporting for that lives on the county's meeting management site. We don't have the ability to record on our Zoom while we're participating in someone else's. So where most of our town meetings live on that YouTube channel and our stream this way. For the joint meeting with the board of supervisors, we need to see Admiral dot org and that being our kind of, they, they don't have one.
Yeah. And just as common to the planning, they have an interest in what we're doing. Um, and so it might develop at some point that process since it's communicated, uh, they're doing their own, um, comprehensive plan. And I think it'd be worthwhile at some point seeing where the points of connection are.
Yeah, for those who are not aware of what we're talking about, we had our second annual joint meeting with the Admiral County Board of Supervisors last Tuesday. And, uh, it, it was very successful, it's like the first one was. Also, supervisor Price usually meets with Matt and I on the Thursday after their regular board meeting on Wednesday night. And it's not a private meeting. It's open to the public. If anybody wants to come by, it's usually about eleven o'clock on Thursday morning. Just call, uh, me or Matt, we'll, we'll let you know if there's any change in that, uh, path or date. But, uh, we sit down with supervisor Price for usually an hour or more. And we talk about everything the county did like before and everything that's planned for the future and she finds out what we're doing. So we have a really good relationship with our supervisor. If there's no further business, I thank everybody for coming this evening. I hope you have a good Thanksgiving and, uh, I'd like to give you a good journey.
I'm gonna leave you, sir.
Second. We are.